And here's Jane. Well, I am glad we're so
Good evening.
Adaptable.
Hello to everyone.
All right. Alec, Jackie, Jane, Kathy, could you please turn on your cameras? And Jane, are you using your phone for audio? Oh Jane, let me ask you to unmute.
I'm gonna try my laptop Jessica and see how it works.
Okay, and can you remind me what your phone number is Jane in case I need to bring in?
Not over a couple of times, I'm not going to.
Yes, 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 of course. Great. So we are all here. All right, and the mics here are on. We are recording. And we have participants. And would just ask everybody to keep their themselves silenced when they're not speaking. And I think we're ready, Will.
All right. Well, when I call this meeting, it's by a township board of trustees to order at seven o'clock. We are holding this meeting in person. But we are still operating under the Washtenaw County Emergency Order. And this extends the option for members of the Board of Trustees to participate and vote remotely. The Board has also decided to extend this action to members of the public for purposes of viewing and to make public comments. When the clerk calls a roll, those members of the Board of Trustees who are present at township hall need only indicate that they are present. If you are participating remotely, please state so and indicate your location by the municipality. When the call is called, roll.
Hathaway?
Present.
Palmer?
Present.
Flinttoft, present. Corto?
Present in Ames, Story County, Iowa.
Thank you for being here. Jerome?
Present, Syo Township, Washtenaw County.
Noel?
Present, Syo Township, Washtenaw County.
Vogel?
Here.
Syo Township?
Yes.
Great, thank you, all here.
Next item is adoption of the agenda. And I learned late today, or I confirmed, I guess I should say, late today, that it is still too early to adopt the contact with Washtenaw County for the creation of the Historic District on the Agenda system. So that's item, I'm gonna go reading this one. It's item I seven. So trustee Jerome will address this issue when he gets to his report. But I propose an amendment to the Agenda to accomplish removal of item I seven.
Will?
Yes.
If we have item, I'd like to request item I eight, the Roads Advisory Committee appointments to be removed from the Consent Agenda to the Action Agenda.
Okay. That would make it down. New Business, I would.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Would you like to put that after K five?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, let's make that, I guess we'll keep it the same item number, but it's K six.
Okay, and Jackie has her hand up.
Oh, Ja- Jacqueline, trustee clerk, excuse me.
Jackie, you're muted.
Sorry. I'd like to request that item I two be moved to the Action Agenda so that we have a chance for further discussion on that item.
Okay. So we put that, should we keep them in order or do we just?
Sure, call.
Okay, let's, let's make that, so we'll put item I two before item I eight as the new business. Are there any other amendments to the Agenda? Trustee Vogel.
I'd like to pull out I two to an action item so we can better understand what that's about.
Oh, I think we just did that.
Yeah. Oh, is that the one, okay.
Yeah, that's the one that trustee clerk.
All right, good, and I also wanted to pull out the Road Advisory, so that's done.
Uh-huh.
No, I, there was, the payment of bills, there was a forty-six thousand dollar charge. And for a number that big, it feels like there ought to be a little discussion about it to have a clear understanding across the board. So assuming that can be very quick, I just want to pull out I one so we can understand what that very significant expenses.
Okay. So we have items I one, I two, and I eight now added to the end of the new, of new business. Are there any other amendments? Trustee Noel?
Well, I just want to clarify, what's the order? I don't have any addition, what's the order of these items now?
So I think what I was gonna do, since we have multiple items moved from the Consent Agenda, is keep them in the same order they were in on the Consent Agenda, but put them at the end of New Business. Are there any other amendments? Seeing none, would someone like to move adoption of the Agenda as amended?
I'll move it.
I'll move it.
Okay, we have move by Palmer, support by Jerome. Please call Jerome.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flinttoft, yes. Corto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Agenda adopted as amended.
The next item is approval of the minutes. We have two sets of minutes. Trustee Corto?
I would like to make a motion to table approval of the minutes. Since they were not available until yesterday and today, leaving inadequate time to review them. My understanding is that they are legally required to be available within the business days of the previous meeting to allow for review time.
We have a motion to table, which is non-debatable. That is applying to both sets of minutes?
Yes.
In that case, support. I'm sorry, yes, I guess we need to have support. So we have motion by Corto, support by Jerome. Please call a roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flinttoft, yes. Corto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Motion passes.
We have, next item is communications to the Board of Trustees.
So the correspondence file is there and you'll note in the table of contents, I tried to highlight the correspondence relating to the SADs. So you see the table of contents? It starts with Daleview SAD, there's a series, Wagner Ridge one, Westview Way a series. For reference later.
Jessica, I, I haven't seen those, when did they come out?
Um, well, we've, we've been receiving them throughout the last two weeks, but I waited until four P M. today to make sure we'd have as much of the SAD correspondence because we have to accept it up till the public hearing tonight.
Okay, that puts us, that puts Board members in the position of wanting to be in
Jane, we're having trouble hearing you.
Yeah.
She's frozen.
Me, I just can't, so can are you able to hear me?
No.
Now we can.
All right, I, I will call in. What I was saying is I, I'd like us to find a different approach to getting the correspondence out because I value being able to scan through that prior to a meeting, so I'm informed by all of those resident perspectives. But if it doesn't come out till four o'clock, I, I lose the benefit of understanding what our residents are thinking about.
Certainly, and, and to clarify, you have received all of this correspondence with each one that goes directly to the Board? It is just that I waited until four P M. because I was getting so much of it today to compile it so that you would get it a second time.
Yes, okay, so I have, oh, fine. So that is a confirmation then that there's nothing in that packet of correspondence that we wouldn't already have gotten is communication to the Board.
Yeah, I don't believe so, there's nothing. Anytime I get a correspondence, you know, to the Board, I forward it on immediately, and that's rare. Most things go directly to the Board as a whole.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The next item is public comments. And you have a brief statement to introduce public comments. This is the time for members of the public to speak for up to three minutes on any matters under the purview of the Board of Trustees. Later, I will ask for public comment on each item on this Agenda for possible action. If your public comment is on a possible action item, then you may comment later when the item is discussed by the Board. Or if you prefer, you may speak on that action item now. You only have one turn to comment per item. There will be another opportunity for public comment toward the end of the meeting. If you are participating remotely, I ask that you raise your Zoom hands to be recognized. If you are participating in person, you may approach the table when it is your turn. I don't know who we're gonna have do timekeeping. Are you volunteering trustee Noel or trustee Jerome? Trustee Jerome? Who's volunteering? Oh, okay.
I'll go.
Okay, trustee Jerome is volunteering to be timekeeper. And we'll, and we'll announce when there's thirty seconds remaining and then time up. Out of fairness, please stop speaking when your three minutes are finished. And I would ask that no one be interrupted during his or her comments. Members of the public will each be given one opportunity to address the Board of Trustees. Although we cannot help but have some repetition, please try to avoid reiterating the same points which were made by the previous speakers. And please do not involve personalities, be as factual as possible. Public comments are not an opportunity for back and forth dialogue. However, at the conclusion, a member of the Board of Trustees may ask for recognition from the moderator to respond to a question of fact. To the trustees, I would add the reminder that we too should avoid personalizing our comments or ascribing motives to others. We are responsible for listening respectfully. That means our facial expressions and body language should not communicate either agreement or disagreement with what other speakers are saying. Neither should we make sounds or speak to show support or opposition to others' comments. When we are in roll call for votes, it is time to say yes or no. The addition of further comments is not appropriate when the vote is underway. Now, are there any members of the public who would like to comment?
Will, I suggest you start with those who are here.
Yes, I, um, I'm gonna Larry gonna start with?
No, 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 I'm just saying, you've got eleven people in the audience, do you want to ask them first?
Yeah, yeah, so let's start with people who are present in person. And then, then we'll move to those who are participating remotely. But is there anyone here who would like to speak? At this point, I mean, we also have public hearings later, so you may come up to the table? Yeah, sure. And if you'd like to introduce yourself?
Whatever you're comfortable with.
It's up to you, there's
On or off, whatever you're comfortable with.
Okay. My name is Jamie Weaver, I live on seventy-nine twenty-five Southwood Road, on Deer Road. I just wanna have to talk to you, maybe we change the tables around. If I moved into your neighborhood and I bought a house and I started having parties out of it, and I started making money out of it, and then it wasn't enough, so then I bought another house where I crossed the street from you and started having parties in it. And it still ain't enough money. So I live right near your neighbor across the street. So then after that, I rent a house down the road. So these people have these parties, come home and stay and go, and go back and forth, I'm doing that. Then after that, I buy a house and I'm renting to people to party over weekends. So I got two houses and two barns, one just now, and I'm working on another one. And so, um, after I'm doing this, and now I got, like this was just last couple of weeks ago, I got trolley cars going up on your house. Back and forth all day, kicking people, running out. I got people throwing the microwave away, your microwave. And then I got people, some people are room, they throw some water, water in the ground. And, um, not, not too much alcohol, sometimes we're rest use at night. But this, this, this happens every, this happens every week. So then, so then, um, so, so now, I got trolley cars going up and down my road, your road. And then I have cars running out to this house, to that house, to the barn, back to this house, all day long. From New York, um, Canada, you know, Florida, California, all over the place. But it's only your neighborhood, you know, across the street from you. So, so then after that, I'm doing that. Then I, then, now it's Sunday. So, no, no, maybe on a night, then I wonder, the buses look like, this could have been an old trucking bus. Let up like you never seen, really nice bus. This, this stuff is like, not even see your face, something's like Disney World type stuff. This, this bus pulls in front of my house at midnight. And they're like, hey! Get Joey! And they're gonna get Joe, and they wanna get some more beer, and they're gonna get some vodka. But they sit there for ten minutes and they're hanging out. And then they die, take off. So they've either wanted it or, but that ain't enough. I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have another party on Sunday, Saturday ain't enough. So I'm having another party, I got a band, I got Bruno Mars, I get up at five o'clock in the morning every day. And I got Bruno Mars jamming to my window. I can barely hear it, but I can hear it. And waking up at nine thirty and it plays till eleven o'clock at night, MCs. You know, the same shitty, um, toast, the same stuff every, every week, you know, these, you know, girls crying, telling her stories, or girl cries, I heard it, I heard it every week. So, but, but this is on a Sunday. And so, so then I, I, you know, I can't sleep. And then, so I got five o'clock in the morning. And, um, and this is supposed to be acceptable. And I, I don't, I don't see anybody that would do this. I, I, I don't see, I wouldn't, I wouldn't do that to you. I mean, if I was having a party, a party, I'd be more respectful. I got dirt whacks. I'm respectful of my neighbors, there are certain times I'll ride, a certain time I won't ride. And I only take them to certain parts of the property. You know, get behind the streeters, but this right here is Silver Top. And I, I don't see a Jane. And, um, and what the funny thing is
Three minutes.
Is these people, hold on. These people get, um, more stuff given to them. You know, if you keep on doing things, this is, I'm, I'm, there's been people that come in here for a winter for years. And it keeps going, and I don't know how they can, it just keeps going. And, um,
Thank, thank you, thank you, Mr. Weaver.
It's just, I, I just, I just want to get it fixed. You know, that's all I want to do. I just, I just wondered, if I was, if I was, if he was in my shoe, what would you do? That's all, that's all I'm asking. And then, I got, I guess I got this, like the Chronicles of West, of Frontier Ranch. I got, I got, I got to come here every weekend, thank you, stuff. But, but it's hard, you know, I'm not a police. I'm not a cop, and there's a lot of neighbors that want to do something. But they don't want to do anything because they don't want to call the police. They, they're uncomfortable, and this is uncomfortable for me.
And thank
And I don't like it.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Is there anyone present, else present who would like to address the Board of Trustees during public comments?
Well, just for clarity, we, you know, I'm here for the regular support set position, so I can either address the Board of Trustees or at that time.
You should, you should, for, for the public hearings, I should have, I guess I should have made that clear. If you're here to address the Board during one of the public hearings, you should wait and speak during that public hearing.
Okay, thank you. And can you list the public hearings, right?
Yeah, when we get to them, I'll, I'll announce each public hearing. There's, there's four public hearings and each one has its own timeframe and so on.
List them now.
Oh, all right, yes, sir. But we have public hearings on the Daleview Drive Special Assessment, the Merlin Way Special Assessment, the Wagner Ridge Court Special Assessment, and the Westview Way and Southwood Court, Court Special Assessment. And we'll do them in that order. Are there any other public comments from those who are present? In that case, are there public comments from those who are participating remotely?
Yes, we have thirty-eight people participating remotely. The first comment from David Reed, followed by Pam Boyd. David?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
David Reed, seven-one-three Merlin Way, Dexter Township, or excuse me, Syo Township. Point of order, Mr. Supervisor. OMA, the Open Meetings Act, Section three, Paragraph five states that a person must be permitted to address the meeting of a public body under rules established and recorded by the public body. And it would seem to me that the rules established and recorded by this public body are the, for public comment are the two sentences that are included in the Agenda that was just moved, seconded, and approved by this Board. The extra rules that you read before each public comment, I don't think are appropriate. I don't think they go, or excuse me, I think they go against the rules of the OMA. And I think, because the OMA specifically says rules established by the public body, not by the supervisor, by fiat. So it would seem to me that this meeting should be run, or the public comment for this meeting should be conducted under the rules as published in the Agenda, the two simple sentences that says three minutes and and you'll ask for comments throughout the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Next up is Pam Boyd, followed by Jillian Carey. Pam?
Good evening, Pam Boyd, five-one-seven Linden Lane, Syo Community Newsletter. I have recently begun studying the BOT equivalent meetings of surrounding communities. And right off the bat, I noticed some, a glaring difference. Where did our pledge of allegiance go? In our previous BOT, under Jack Knowles, we said the pledge of allegiance at the beginning of each meeting. I respectfully ask that it once again be a part of these meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Next up is Jillian Carey. Jillian?
Good evening.
Hi, Jillian.
Hi. Reading through the, the Agenda packet, I noticed the Road Advisory Committee charge. And thank you for considering nominating me. I read through the whole thing and including the updated resolution. And I noticed that it, on, let's see, three A, it says members must be residents of the Township. And I went through, and I, I know most of these names, but, and I did a residency check on my own. And Todd Bailey is not a resident of Syo Township. So that's something that needs to be looked at. Also, under number, number four, it, it's the very first, it doesn't have a letter, but it says date and meetings at Township Hall. That all the, the committee meetings would be at Township Hall. Well, I am assuming, and I don't want to make assumptions because evidence is clarity, and that's what holds up in court, that the hybrid resolution would trump that until December thirty-first. I'm hoping, because I noticed that there's four members that are meeting remotely. And I'm assuming there's some type of, I mean, well, I know there's an outbreak of COVID with the Delta variant. And I'm hoping that it's not, we don't have an outbreak at Township Hall. But I just want to make that, you know, clarify for the committee members that we can, if, if we're nominated, or if we're approved, that we can meet through hybrid. Also, after listening to Jamie's comments, and, you know, I've been out to the, the, the event barns on Syo Church during a Saturday night. And they were actually well behaved because they thought that somebody from the Township was attending. And it was still loud. So I find it interesting that we have these the conditional use and which is actually rules of order for the party barns, or excuse me, the event barns, the agritourism. And those are not being enforced fully, and these residents have been living through hell for, I think, thirteen years. And I know that none of us would want to live through that, and none of us would put up with it. And we would end up being a complainer. So what's interesting is that we have these rules of order for our, our Board meetings, and they are held to account. But for the, the Township at large, there's many ordinances and conditional uses that are not enforced. I really feel that for residents, peace of mind when they're living at home, that these should be taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you, Jillian. Next, I see Rob Pattinson. Rob?
Thank you, Rob Pattinson, five hundred North Z. I'm noticing tonight something that happened last night for the first time, and that, at the Planning Commission meeting. And that is that Jessica, I can hear you extremely clearly. It's as if the microphone is right in front of you. Will is more difficult to hear. I could barely hear Donna, sorry, I should use your trustee and last names. And also hearing the person speaking at the table, I believe it was Jamie, was extremely difficult to hear. So could you check and see if you have multiple microphones available for your Zoom setting? It could be that the microphone hanging from the ceiling has not been selected, and it's very difficult to hear the people in the room. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you, Rob. On a practical note, I would just suggest, if that promise continues, Donna, if you'd be so kind to move a little closer to this microphone? Super, thank you. And those are all the hands I see. Briefly, I know, for those here and us who can't see who's here, Anna B., Anne Jamanson, Anne Catherine Hume, Bill Peterson, Carol Kanaki, Daryl Maude, David Reed, Doug A., Doug Armstrong, Elizabeth Hetrick, unnamed, Janet Medaw, Jean Herg, JG, Jillian Carey, Joe Pattinson, John Nanos, Jonathan Greenberg, Joseph Maynard, our engineer, Julia Beer, Kathleen Brant, Lance, Lori Beckhofer, Mama K., Marcy, Mark Rushbrook, Matthew Ransom, Michelle Cody, Monica Hugh, Pam Boyd, Paul Rasmussen, Rob Pattinson, Sheila Steve, Theo Eggermont, two unnamed, three unnamed, Paul Graham, and T A S. Will?
Okay, let's see, that brings us to reports. And first, we have special guest, County Clerk Lawrence Castenbaum, who is here in his capacity as the Chair of the Apportionment Commission to give us a presentation on the decennial apportionment of county districts. Welcome.
Yes, hello, thank you, and, and thank you for the invitation. I'm, I'm Larry Castenbaum, I'm the County Clerk of Rixter Bees. And as, by virtue of that position, I am a member of the Washtenaw County Apportionment Commission, which is a five-member body consisting of the County Clerk, the County Prosecutor, the County Prosecutor, the County Prosecutor, and the Chairs of two major parties in the county. I will get into more detail about that in a moment. But I should say that although I am the Chair of the Commission selected by my colleagues, I'm not speaking on behalf of the Commission here. I'm, the opinions that I express are my own. And the, and opinions and analysis that I'm, and present to you are my own. You know, I was, I was asked to, to basically, I'm speaking not just to the people in this room, but the entire audience that is watching here. And, and, and first, I might quickly bring the people up to date on the history of how we got to be where we are with this. And that there is a tendency to think of the county as being like a higher level of government than a township or a city. And that's actually a misconception. The county has very limited powers. You folks around the table in this room have vastly more powers than a county commissioner does. Because the Township, any townships in your village has, has the power, you know, to protect the public, health, safety, and welfare, and do what's necessary. The county has only those specific enumerated powers and authorities that are delegated to it by the state of Michigan. And so the And so the Board of Commissioners has very little authority, laws, ordinances. Their main power is budgetary. And the budgetary power is critical because the county is made up of so many different pieces and parts. And the County Board and the County Administrator are the only, basically the only entities that attempts to ride herd on the entire collection of all of these different things. So the Board of Commissioners is is important, but it's not like being in Congress. It's not like, you know, if 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 any of you were to move from, say, the Board of Trustees to be the County Commissioner, you might be surprised at how little authority you have over things that all of it is, it has been in recent years, the the tendency for people to move, you know, from the Board of Commissioners to State Representative, to State Senator, or Congress, whatever, that that's and to think about the County Board as if it was, you know, a chain, you know, part of that, you know, a link in that chain of every piece of authority, and it's not. It's a, you know, the county is in one way is a kind of a special purpose district that is the state is completely entitled to counties to cover things like criminal justice, courts, land records, elections, and so forth. The county, for those of you, and again, I'm speaking to a large audience here. If you if you come from another state and you observe counties in operation in other states, you should bear in mind that every state is different. Counties have different roles in different states. And many of them are quite different from what we have here in Michigan. And the but what we have, but what we have here
Jessica, we cannot hear Mr. Kestenbaum.
I'm sorry. I think there was a message up there that the microphone wasn't working.
We haven't been, we haven't been able to hear you.
What happened, what's happening is it, because it's picking up your microphone, Jessica, it's picking up you typing, which makes it hard to hear Mr. Kestenbaum. Because it's not being assigned like Rob Pattinson had mentioned to the center speaker, and I think that's what's confusing individuals, is it's picking up your note-taking.
Okay, here. Can you can you all tell us, those joining by Zoom, when did the sound cut off? Where would you like him to pick up?
It was less than, it was less than forty seconds ago.
I I I mean,
Yeah, good.
So the Board of Supervisors consisted of the Supervisor of every township. The township officials until nineteen-sixties were elected in April. So the Board's year started in April, when the when the new supervisor were elected. The supervisor had a one-year term. There were township elections in every township, every April, every year. So the clerk and supervisor, and so forth, had one-year terms. And then gradually changed. What happened was, in the nineteen-sixties, the the U.S. Supreme Court started coming down with decisions addressing the unequal representation that many states have in their legislatures and in congressional districts. And they and ultimately, this was developed to count local governments. And in Michigan counties, where you might have a township with fifty thousand people and a township with eight people, having one supervisor with one vote representing each township was obviously not equitable for maximum. Especially as township became more urban or suburban over time. So the, starting in nineteen sixty-eight, each county was divided up by the Apportement Commission, such as the OMA, into single-member districts, each of which elect one member of the County Board. And the statute allowed a range of sizes. It allowed the Board of, the Board of, the Apportement Commission to determine how many districts they drawn. Because as a practical matter, it made a difference, you know, for example, in terms of of aligning townships and areas within a county. You know, sometimes one number might work, and another number wouldn't work, or require too many townships to be split, and that's a what we've had in the last, both ten years ago, and today in the census, we have in this county, the city of Ann Arbor, which is almost precisely one-third of the county's population. And because of the long time, or relatively long time political tradition of Ann Arbor has its districts, and the rest of the county has its districts, and and they shouldn't be mixed. That's the tradition. Coming from a time of much more contention over county issues than now. The choice was made ten years ago to have a number divisible by three, so that Ann Arbor, you could have the basically the expressway ring around Ann Arbor, and and including, you know, pieces of township that happen to be inside that ring, but basically the city of Ann Arbor. The one set of districts being, in this case, there were three districts inside of Ann Arbor, and six districts in the rest of the county. And now, ten years later, in twenty-twenty, there, the shifts in population, basically every part of the county has grown in population. Even the areas that had been in decline, such as the city of Xlanning, has gained population. So the the relative amount of population in different areas has shifted only slightly. And the city of Ann Arbor is still one-third of the county's population. And the expectation among people who've been talking about this, and the commissioners, and the public who's talking to us, is that we are likely to select a number divisible by three, so as to accommodate that geography. Briefly go over the ways that this has happened in the past. In nineteen, after the nineteen-ninety census, there was a, the number of districts was increased at that time to fifteen. That's the it was a partisan situation. The Apportement Commission was a majority, had a majority of Republicans. And there was an effort to create a County Board map that could elect a majority of Republicans at that time. And that necessitated increasing the number for various reasons. And the, and notwithstanding the number being increased, there were, it was arranged in such a way that many of three incumbents were in one district and so forth. It was a I think it's fair to say it was kind of a gerrymandering plan. When the district that I represented on the Washtenaw County Board consisted of a strip of Ann Arbor that started near the corner of Wagner and Miller, and extended down along nine ninety-four, almost to the corner of Stone School and elsewhere. It's sort of the equivalent of taking, making a state that starts in Seattle and ends up in Miami, and doesn't include most of the area of the county. And in two thousand, the at that time, I was an incumbent commissioner, and so I was there advocating on behalf of the commissioners and suggesting plans and so forth. And at that time, the Commission, you know, they were, they were very interested in reducing the number, having a smaller board than the fifteen that was there at that time. And the the two main choices they were looking at were nine districts or eleven districts. And they had these districts drawn out on maps and so forth. And many people came. There was, there was, there was a in part, I think because of the police services controversy that was occurring then over funding for Sheriff's Department Road Patrol, there were people whose who thought that that it would help to reduce the size of the County Board. And so the, so they had the nine district map and the eleven district map. And I think that the nine district map was was disfavored by a lot of the people who came to see it, because the entire west part of the county was all in one district, Manchester and Chelsea. And, you know, we're all in one district. And the eleven district plan was elected with a lot of public comment favoritism. So the, during the first decade of the century, we had eleven districts. I think there was a general sense that the board with eleven districts, with eleven members, functioned better than the fifteen-member board. Part of that was, I think a large part of that was the personalities of the people who were there that that changed. In twenty-ten, when I was on the Commission, the Apportement Commission for the first time, and again, and this was the time that we were faced with Ann Arbor being exactly one-third of the counties. And the, and there was some discussion about having nine or having twelve. And we ended up with nine. And the and I I think we, the the five members of the Commission, the two Party Chairs, the three county officials, we voted unanimously for a plan, which I think, I think most people would agree, is simple, straightforward, and clear. I think those are important things, given the amount of interaction with the public, that the county officials, the campaigners, and so forth, constituents communicating with our commissioners, that the clearer and simpler the boundaries are, the better it is for all of those stakeholders. And I think we accomplished that many years ago with the nine district plan. And it was supported unanimously by the Apportement Commission, and there was no legal challenge to the districts that there had been in previous states. This year, the the county's population has increased by eight percent over twenty-ten countywide. And as I said, every area has increased, you know, the kind of rising tide is lifting all of our thoughts. And Ann Arbor is still one-third of the county's population. The eight percent, by the way, Washtenaw County grew at a greater rate than any of the surrounding counties, including Hope, and Livingston. Livingston was seven percent. And it would be possible to recreate the, you know, the nine districts with slight adjustments if we were to do that. What's happening instead, though, is that there are there are a number of different voices arguing for that nine is too few for a county's size of Washtenaw, that we should have a larger number of districts. And that's coming, on the one hand, from the Republican Party, because since twenty-eighteen, all non-commissioners have all been Democrats. The, as I said, this is not because the districts are gerrymandering, but that even the most conservative one-ninth of the county is not conservative enough to elect a Republican. And and so the argument is that if we had more districts, we'd have more diverse ideological diversity. I guess you could say a partisan diversity. I think that if we had any more than nine, we would probably have a Republican, or at least one Republican on the board. The number of Republicans over time has been gradually decreasing from election to election. And the county, not just Ann Arbor, but the entire county in Scioto Township is a prime example of this, has gradually become more democratic over time. I mean, Washtenaw County used to be one of the most Republican counties in the state. You know, Franklin Roosevelt won four landslide elections, never carried Washtenaw County. And and the almost all the other counties in Michigan voted for Washtenaw County, at least once, Washtenaw County never did. But the county has been, had been moving toward Democrats. And so the, I think there's no question in anyone's mind that once these districts are drawn and new commissioners are elected from the new districts, that they will still be a majority of Democrats, if not all Democrats. So we have the nine people who are there now, and I I think that most would agree, we have a very good board, a very good County Board, we have very, I would compare it vaguely to any other county in the state in terms of qualifications and the skills of the people who are there. But and and naturally, they, those folks are saying, we should, we should not, we should not interfere with stuff, we should not mess with it, we should keep it at nine. The Republicans, in fact, one of the Republicans, most people, was Dan Smith, who's former County Commissioner himself. He's saying there should be twenty-one, and the range, the range of 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 board sizes for a county of this population is from five to twenty-one. Maximum over is twenty-one, minimum is five. And the and I thought, I think that twenty-one is unlikely. The boardroom would have to be mainly, you know, reconfigured without that many that many seats around the table. But in the same time, the progressive wing of the Democratic Party is also arguing for more, more seats for two different reasons. Not so much take care that there's any Republicans in our country, because one of the big arguments is that the County Board has become the, what I call, farm team of local politics. The people that, except for Donna Losinski, correctly, all of our state reps have come from the County Board. And the County Board is a place where local political people, they 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 can serve on the County Board and demonstrate or develop their skills, you know, and and gain recognition and and perhaps move on to the legislature. And you've seen that, again, Jeff Irwin, Yusuf Rabi, and so on. And the, Alma Wheeler-Smith is also a County Commissioner. The you know, there's also the the argument, a smaller board functions better. And and I think that when, if you're dealing with a committee, if you're dealing with, say, a jury, if you imagine being on a jury with twelve people deliberate on a village innocent or something of that nature, that, you know, to say, okay, now let's have five more people in the room, you know, that would become more unwillable. But the there's an aspect of the Washtenaw County Board which is different from other counties. Washtenaw County is not like the other eighty-two counties in important ways. That Washtenaw County's Board is a lot less involved in the minutia of county government than most counties are. Unlike most counties, there are no committee structures. When I was on the Indian County Board, you know, there were five, there were five committees, committees met all the time, the board met all the time. When they were, when it was trying to create the budget, that basically meant nonstop meetings for weeks, you know, to work out all the budgets, you know, and so forth. The Washtenaw County Board has delegated a lot of the County Administrator. Most counties do not have an Administrator. Indian County, whereas Florida has, still has a County Controller, which is more like a chief financial officer than an administrator. The we had, you know, I I think many of you know that Washtenaw County Government was renamed by Mary Lou Murray. She was County Commissioner from nineteen seventy-two to nineteen ninety-six. And that entire time, she was the dominant figure in county government. And and she, yeah, she remade, and she created the partisan. She had, she had a lot of good ideas, a lot of good, but she was also, she was the opposite of a defensive builder. She was, she wanted to have her one-vote majority and 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 didn't care about anyone else who lived on the board. So she was always either loved or hated by everyone. And and so she really centralized things to the point where the board became a lot more like the corporate board directors, dealing with big questions of policy rather than the minutia that most county boards or group boards are not doing at all. So with that in mind, the number of commissioners doesn't matter as much as it would if you were, again, considering something like a jury or a committee that was, they had to get together and work and and wrangle about things. The County Board doesn't do much of that. So considering the on the one hand, this pressure from newly built and and respect them to have more commissioners, the views of the incumbent commissioners frankly don't carry a lot of weight in this process. We're going to have more commissioners than we have now. And we have a number that's divisible by three, and it's greater than nine, but it's an odd number, and it's not as many as twenty-one, that takes you to fifteen. And so I looked at the numbers. And I'm sure some of you already know, Syo Township in the 2020 census has seventeen thousand six hundred forty-eight people. And the city of Dexter, right, you know, partly enclosed by the township, it's another forty-three, forty-six. So that's about just under twenty-two thousand people in, you know, Syo and Dexter, Dexter City. And that would be, that territory would be perfect to be a district if there were seventeen districts.
Right.
But if there could have fifteen districts, it would have to be a little bit larger. So what I would imagine, again, this is not my proposal or any kind of commitment, this is what's wanting to happen, but a reasonable fifteen district plan might take Syo, city of Dexter, and maybe like the south half of Webster, and make that a district that would be very close to the population ideal for one-fifteen for the county. With Chelsea and its surrounding townships. And the north half of Webster being another district that's also in the right range. So those are the implications, I think, for Syo Township. What happened in 2000 was Syo Township has the unlucky distinction of being right in the middle and having a lot of population. And so in 2000, when the districts were drawn, basically all the districts converged on Syo Township. Population was basically spooned out to six different districts to validate populations. So Syo Township didn't have a, you know, someone on the board who was uniquely never elected. It was the thing that we knew that the county board, we got, and so in the 2010 process, the then Syo Township official came to the Appportionment Commission and said, please don't do that to us again. And we complied. And the proposal that we had with a twelve-member board, so one basically, one twelve of the county, would have been Syo Township or Alamo, except for like a few islands on the other side of the county. And Ann Arbor Township, the main part of Ann Arbor Township, the L-shaped part. That together with the other nine districts. And I think folks from Syo at the time were very satisfied with that, but that's not what we ended up with. Instead, Syo was put in the first district along with Chelsea and Dexter and so on. And I think there was a sense that, you know, that Chelsea and Hilton and Linland and so forth, that was the dog, and Syo Township was the tail. But really, it's the other way around. Syo Township is the dog, and Chelsea is the tail. And I have to, you know, obviously, I'm a resident of Syo Township. And so Jason Najewski, who is the commissioner for this district, the first district, is someone who I have been very impressed with and very happy to have to be there. I think, so the reconfiguration of districts is inevitable, especially if we're not, we're going to change the number, which I think is likely. I think the one member, the portion who really still wants to have nine is County Treasurer Captain McBarry. I was having the new prosecutor. He has not said much about it, but I believe he's looking toward fifteen. Based on my conversations with him. And I believe that both party chairs are also in that camp. So they said, I expect it to be about fifteen. And obviously, with more districts, that gives a place like Syo an opportunity to have more of an impact on the district and not sharing it with Chelsea or, you know, obviously sharing it with Dexter, sure. So we've been having public hearings. We're going to have, we've had one. The public hearings were going to be in person, but they have retreated to being on Zoom. We had one last Saturday. We're having another one this Saturday at eight-thirty a.m. in basically replacing the Dexter forum that normally happens on Saturday mornings at eight-thirty a.m. They basically offered us their time slot, their Zooms, that we could hopefully maximize the number of people who'll come and give their views about the county commission district thing. And there'll be a third one later in September. The schedule for getting this job done is very tight. And very soon, we have, you know, if recents are changed, you know, they have to be changed. They have to be done very soon after this. The filing deadline for candidates is going to be in April. It's been moved up from where it used to be in May. So everything has to be in place, including, you know, obviously, you have the statewide Appportionment Commission, which is choosing congressional, state senate, and state representative districts. We have county Appportionment Commissions in every county. And each of these, there will be potentially litigation over these boundaries. And then every city that has wards has to redraw their wards. So in order to maintain equal population of wards. Now, I've probably spoken too long, if there's a question.
I just want to thank you, Larry. This has been an incredible presentation, and we're so glad that you're here. So this could have, currently, I want to give a shout out to District Nine. We have about seventy-five residents in District Nine as well, though most of Syo Township is in District One. So we would be consolidated most likely into one district. And I can imagine that this could have implications for Syo to have more of a voice, a stronger voice at the county instead of being diluted. So Larry, when does this take effect? When would the first additional candidates run?
Okay. The, basically, this is based on the 2020 census. And the election for the new districts would be, you know, the primary in August of 2022, and the election in November 2022. And the new commissioners would take office on the first day of January 2020.
Gotcha.
So up until that day, we have the current nine commissioners. And the, sort of, going back to it was first created in its current form, they had the election in November 1868. So the board of commissioners really dates from, in terms of the date, January first of 1869. It doesn't, as in its current form of single-member districts, it doesn't go back, you know, a hundred years of those actions.
Great. Thank you, Larry. There's some noise in the back there. Is that somebody's cell phone? Yep, thank you.
Thanks. Thanks very much for the presentation. I guess if there are questions, we could entertain questions from members of the public as well, if people have questions. Are there people out there who have questions?
So raise your hand. Looks like we have a question from Pam Boyd. Pam?
Thank you. It was really hard to hear him. And I did understand that he has given presentations that may have been online before. Could you give me the communities of those potential Zoom meetings that I could listen again? I'd really like to know more about this. But it was really hard for me to understand. So did you speak to Chelsea or Dexter or that might be online, sir?
I have not done another presentation like this to a local government. But we have had a number of meetings and public hearings, one public hearing so far, as well as, you know, written and oral public comment in our meetings. All of that material, including the recordings of those Zoom meetings, are all online at washtenaw.org/apportionment. And that website has the current map of commissioners, and it has the population figures. If you wanted to work out how districts could be different, you can, you know, all the 2020 census population figures are provided there. They will be provided in a more accessible form a little bit later this month. But they're out there, you know, the population per jurisdiction and the population per block is all on that website. And the members of the commission and opportunity, if you want to submit written comments or if you wanted to come up with a plan and submit it to us, again, that would be most welcome. But washtenaw.org/apportionment.
Thank you, Clerk Kestenbaum. Mary Gillis, our deputy, if you could just chat that link out to everybody so that they have it. It's also in the packet. And Pam, to your point about hearing, I'll try to adjust the recording and make sure that the recording, the audio is okay there.
Thank you.
I came to this meeting by invitation, and I have not gotten a similar invitation from Chelsea or anywhere else.
Well, thank you.
Thank you so much.
I think we'll now move on to our next report. According to my agenda, the next report is from the fire chief.
Do you think we might hear better if it's back here?
Maybe. You could try. Sure. Happy to try or just?
Or maybe there.
Yeah, or just back up to this mic? Maybe just back up a little bit, Andy? The one above your head? Sorry.
Is that better? Does that pick up better? Can someone give us a signal from out there remotely? Slightly better?
Slightly better. It's just gonna, unfortunately, until we can change the microphone, we're just gonna have to make sure that we're very quiet and leave the presentation to Andy, Chieffoot. Because it just picks up all the ancillary noises.
Okay, I'll try to be brief this evening. I do have a couple of, I want to hold my regular monthly report, real brief station update as to where that. This month, one hundred and forty-two incidents, August twenty-one. Eight fires, seventy medical calls, were pretty typical, run by big towns. However, overall total numbers were up quite a bit. As compared to 2020, ninety-four, and 2019, eighty-nine calls. Hundred and forty-two this month is a pretty significant increase. Number of significant incidents. We had a structure fire on April Drive. This caused substantial damage inside the structure. Significant, but solvable damage to the structure. They were able to actually occupy the building the next day. Origin and cause determined that was a piece of equipment within the building malfunction and caught fire. Then a couple notable things about this incident. We responded to a fire, not a structural fire. So the system inside the building didn't stop and fire us. However, when we got it, we recognized it was working fire. We showed over three people, which required us to call assistance from our neighboring departments. But there was a delay, and it was actually starting to prevent an operation. We got that board of commissioners. Our second company there was Ann Arbor City, Jack and Rose Station, or St. John Drive there. But they were there pretty quick. We made entry with them, removed the fire control. We were there for probably three or four hours ventilating the building, getting the smoke out. We had a structure fire at five-four-one-one Jackson. This was a minor fire that contracted some work on renovation of the building. They had a door that was sealed with metal. It was a metal panel building. As they were cutting the bolts off, it generated heat, started a small fire inside the wall. This was an incident with the handle resolved, it peeled the wall away and extinguished the debris that was burning inside. The interesting part of this is the alarm came into one-eight-one soft. I looked into assessing. This business has a loading dock, it's a large factor of objects. It was loading dock with an entrance off of Z, and they created an address and began using it. So it's not anywhere in county justice, our record or anything like that. Fortunately, it was close to the number sequentially, and we're able to find it thoroughly. More vehicle accident occurred on N fourteen, West of Millers, involved four tractor trailers. My understanding was, as they were slowing down construction, one tractor trailer did not, and ended up spreading the other three. One fuel had been opened and caught fire. One person was injured by the attack. They only came into Ann Arbor Township, however, when they, as they saw the fire coming up, they passed it through a ditch and they called us. We arrived, they were already extinguishing the fire. And we worked with them for probably about forty-five minutes to contain all the fuel and the wells that was spilled off the vehicle's main profession. Washtenaw County Technical Rescue Team had an activation. We have two members on that team. City of Mylon requested assistance on a tractor-trailer extrication on twenty-three-year-old. One cow, well, one of our firefighters, was on duty during the incident, was able to immediately respond. And they spent an hour there for me that ride. Significant storm, I think everybody remembers August twelve. Number of call fires down. Fortunately, we had some callback folks as we were just dispatched to extra for a structure fire. And all our undue people were assisted to them. When all these called, given the callback and mutually to get all our calls, nothing major consequence occurred, and we're able to handle it. And lastly, our hazmat team has a drone component. It needs that for surveillance, periphery. They've been called off of police for missing persons, things of that nature. That team was activated to assist Calhoun County. An officer was building line of duty. And they had a credible threat against the funeral. So they, and it's events with that, so they contacted a number of those teams. Team Armstrong was part of that team and spent a day, probably an hour. They were doing aerial surveillance, whatever was requested. And to mention earlier Dexter, this is about two. We had a team look at one fire, the fire already pulled out. And we came to the same conclusion, in terms of that's the way it is. And in this case, we had prevention outlooking in these buildings. It's open, potential for a fire. And potential for prevent this. Full response time, nine minutes, forty-three seconds. Includes two minutes and forty-one seconds of all processing time. And we made our six-minute call, forty-six minutes. Forty-two incidents again for the month, puts us near today, probably about twenty minutes or ten a year over a year. Light bit of that, our dispatch system has been operated. And some different call typings that we go on have been included this month. However, anecdotally, from the firefighters, that's not much of a component. It's more of car accidents, structure fires, medical calls, everything else that would normally go on. One element related to Lieutenant Hunt's comments of last board meeting. He has even Jackson as a veteran. August twenty-twenty-one, completed two-hundred-and-sixty-four hours of training. Public briefing in our zone maps. Phone three, our western southern edge of the community, that's where we live. With three-hundred-and-forty-six calls here today, southeast. Second with three-twenty-one, and our north, northeast, hundred and forty-one calls here. Including your back by heat map. And basically, shows that same thing. Our Baker, Ninety-four, Jackson area is pretty busy, Z, Jackson, and so on. Again, our popular areas are more busy, second is Currie. There's no, if the board has any questions on our report, we have to answer them. And if not, I will.
Please go ahead.
The interior work is nearing completion. Floors are in, kitchens in, winter paint's done, minor hangups, ceiling tiles, we've got half of them on site, the other hatch here is sweet. And the last hang up is the door. And the last hang up is doors are expected beginning of next month, at which time anticipate moving incident to begin the. It's rapidly going to a close with the interior renovations. We can see that trailer leaving and our back door parking lot getting done, actually starting ones. Along with that, we have space for ministry of assistance and I believe our HR director, which I'm not familiar with. Be happy to speak to that as well at that time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
That is the next item on the reports. I don't see, did she switch to Ramon?
Uh, yes, I think so. Let me see. Yes, bring her in.
To solve the making problem.
Good mor, good evening.
Hi Diane.
Hi, since my voice does not carry like some, like Andy's does, I thought I would do this from the office. So I, I moved quickly. So good evening. Just set it right, there we go. At the end of May, I was hired as a township's human resources consultant. I had a lengthy list of initiatives and projects I wanted to complete. But as my time began, my attention was diverted to other issues. A large part was spent listening to staff and elected officials. Remember, this is what the staff members felt they were missing, someone to talk to. Individuals shared their hopes, their disappointments, their ideas and their frustrations. Some of the projects I have completed or are in process of completing. And I'll go through the different areas. Recruitment, position descriptions and posting materials were created for the deputy, deputy treasurer, the township administrator, the HR generalist, a project manager, a temporary fire department administrative assistant. Hiring, including developing interview questions, interviewing background and reference checks and onboarding for the assessor. A utilities technician, an HR generalist, we're actually interviewing this on Thursday. And we had a need for somebody to help out as a temporary tax assistant. So I located another staff member in township that could take some extra hours. And he's been working with the taxes in the last few weeks. I also was the point of contact with Amy Sell, who's our search consultant for the township administrator's search. I've spoken to former clients of hers. I've shared township information. And I've discussed the process of recruitment and hiring with her. Employee relations. I resolved a longstanding overtime pay issue for a staff member. I wrote memos of understandings and exceptions to policy or practice. Benefits, I've investigated changing the effective date for health benefits. I'm not sure if you know this, but if you're hired, let's say August thirtieth, as a staff member, you do not, you're not eligible for help, for health. Message from our benefits consultant with Burnham and Flowers to make that change. Of making it closer to the start date. And I've been working on some short-term disability cases. Policies and procedures, I have initial drafts of the drug and alcohol free policy and the background check policy. And I've noted lots. Pardon?
Keep going Diane. Residents, please keep your, yourselves on, on mute. Diane?
Okay. And I've noted several areas of, for clarification and inclusion in the staff handbook when the new HR generalist begins. Compensation and classification. I've worked on salary increases for two staff members and done revisions of some of the various position descriptions that we have here. Organizational development, I've advised elected, elected officials on benefits, on the benefits and pitfalls of directed organization plans. There is so much to be done for the incoming HR generalist. Including bringing the currently open positions to a close. Reviewing and reorganizing personnel files. Developing a performance management system with merit increases. Updating position descriptions. Developing a true onboarding process. And some updates to policies as well as the staff handbook. I come away from my time in SIO hoping that I contributed in some ways. I have definitely gained knowledge of what transpires in local government. I cannot leave without giving you my advice on how to move forward. And what you need to do. These appear to be basic and common sense, but sometimes I have not seen consistent displayment. First thing, we need to work together to find common ground. Remember, we the residents elected you. Adopt rules of order and stick to them, please. Respect each other. You're all talented professionals with great ideas. Your ideas may not always be the same, but respect each other. Criticize ideas and not people. Set aside egos. You may have heard my analogy, analogy of a swimming lane. What you must do is review the statutes dealing with your elected position. And make sure you meet them. Include legal counsel in areas that appear to be up to interpretation. And don't take on work that belongs to others. Let the residents express the good and the bad that they see. Remember, the more you try to silence the voice of the people, the louder it becomes. Listen, please, listen. And finally, invite participation on committees and commissions, even if the ideas or opinions are contrary to your own. Thank you for this opportunity of serving the township since the end of May. Although my formal, formal work with the SIO Township is done, actually I have a few more things to finish up this week. I will continue to be involved, attending BOT meetings. Hopefully working on the upcoming elections. And finally, being a participant in local governments. Thank you.
We should applaud.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you Diane. The next reports are our regular reports. The first on the list is Gelman. Plus the Noel, would you like to report?
Yes. I just, before I start, I want to say thank you to Diane. It's been wonderful having you. And thank you. Okay. We had a card meeting on September seventh. Dan Hamel from Eagle updated the group on the current Gelman activities that are required under the fourth amended consent judgment that has been implemented by Judge Connors. So Gelman and the city of Ann Arbor are currently getting access agreements for the new monitoring wells and treatment wells that will be placed under the CJ. Gelman has submitted a draft work plan to Eagle. And this is currently under review. The intervenors expect a schedule to be released from Eagle in the next few weeks. On exactly what the steps will be in this work plan that Gelman has submitted. Okay, and then I wanted to briefly update everybody. Last night, I watched the Ann Arbor City Council meeting. It was a city council working session to discuss water issues. And of course, we know this is relevant for SIO Township. The focus of the meeting was on a consideration of options for drinking water in the city in the future. The estimated costs to rehabilitate the current Ann Arbor Water Treatment Plant are a hundred and eight million dollars. The city has also, also looked at the consideration of connecting to Great Lakes Water Authority. The costs associated with that type of connection would be three hundred and fifty-five million dollars. City staff is recommending rehabilitation of the existing water treatment plant. There is extensive discussion on the pros and cons of both. City Council has approved the water rate increases that will come in the future to cover the costs of the plant rehabilitation. The next steps will be preparation of a conceptual design plan for the upgrades. And that'll be addressed soon at another city council meeting. So we have to wait and see what the decisions are there regarding SIO. It's gonna have implications for SIO Township. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you. I think I will change the order here a little bit. Why don't we go first to the clerk's report?
Thank you Will. Um, a brief report, update on finances. I want to thank the board for the authorization to hire the tenth part-time assistant. Through some creative work with Donna, Rebecca and Diane, that person has become the tax assistant. And I'll let, it's somebody who has started learning how to do cash receipting, which was of course, big process during tax time. I'll let Donna tell you a little bit about who that person is and any plan she has for keeping him busy. Uh, second, an update on the audit for fiscal year end, twenty-one year end. Um, March twenty twenty-one, by law, we have to have the audit completed within six months, that's nine thirty. We, I want to give a highlight of the draft meeting we had, standard practice with the auditors on August twenty-sixth, with the treasurer supervisor Rebecca and myself with Plant Moran, Dave and Ashley. Good update dates, overall in good shape. They'll be presenting their final report to us just as soon as they can finish it. However, they alerted us that they cannot finish our audit until we, SIO Township, they cannot ethically finish our audit, until we, SIO Township, assign somebody with the skills and the experience needed to review the financial statements on our behalf. Rebecca Maude, our finance manager, who's been working overtime, well taking care of family and, and really pulling through. For us, she has the skills, but not the experience and she's got nobody to guide her who has that experience, who is available at this time. So after meeting with the auditors, the four of us generated different options. As you know, there's a shortage in the workforce generally, especially in experienced government finance professionals. Um, so we came to the consensus to reach out to Woodhill or anybody else we could think of. Um, I reached out to Woodhill, chatted with them. They also wanted to chat with the supervisor to make sure everybody was on board. Um, they've done a wonderful job for us, but, but not without sometimes us kicking and screaming. So they wanted to make sure we were all on board. And two days later, Will let us know that he had changed his mind to not reach out to Woodhill and suggested that we might instead request an extension for the audit. Um, in the meantime, Rebecca has been chugging through. And I reached out for some help to whoever I could think of. So the Pittsfield Clerk, I asked her if she might loan us her finance director to jump in and help mentor Rebecca to, to get through this. And so I want to thank the finance director, Tracy Watkins, about thirty plus years of experience, who has jumped in and is generously working with Rebecca and providing that financial review. And that is in fact sufficient for the auditors. They were very happy we were able to do that. So I expect, um, we should be able to complete the audit on time. I want to thank Pittsfield Township. Um, it's my opinion, we don't need an extension and we're on track to file by September thirtieth. So that Will will be able to upload the F sixty-five and then Plant Moran will be ready to present to the board, likely after the submission, which is okay, not totally unprecedented. Uh, but so the board is aware, the presentation to the board, it wouldn't change anything if the auditors presented to us prior to submission. So it would be submitted by the thirtieth and then they would present to us hopefully on October twelfth, would be their public presentation. Um, again, requesting an extension is certainly not the end of the world. The sky does not fall, but it's not without its consequences, its negative consequences. And one of the most immediate consequences of that is that it would hold up our American Recovery Act funds. The, the over million dollars that we want to draw down from the state as an NAU to use for an infrastructure project. So that's something we're excited about and it has a cascading effect. So again, if we don't need to request an extension, I recommend we don't. Ultimately, as the supervisor has, you know, described, he, he may, may do so. Uh, but I just want you all to know, I think it's not necessary and would create some inconvenience and harm for the township if we did so. At the next meeting, September twenty-eighth, I'll be presenting a proposal to the board for additional financial capacity to the team. The way that folks are working right now, the conditions under which they're working while out caring for family with overtime, it's, it's just not right. As you all know, I cannot hire, I cannot fire, and I cannot hire consultants without the board's support. So for the sake of the staff, for the sake of our residents, please ask me what questions you need, get ready to support a proposal on September twenty-eighth. Um, I'm recommending a consultancy, possibly additional staff, but I think a consultancy is more flexible since I know we may have a deputy treasurer position, depending on Donna's timeline and other moving parts. Um, but we need to get some high level finance staff in here, either Woodhill or something similar. Diane and I have discussed options. Everyone is recommending this, except the board of supervisors so far. So hope we will do that on the twenty-eighth. And ongoing, I want to thank Jackie Corto, we've had a couple of good conversations. Um, my offer stands to have any conversations, Jane, Alec, anybody else who wants to talk about finance, um, my legal objections to the actions of the board on August seventeenth or anything else, please listen to the professionals who the township employs. Donna, myself, Diane, Woodhill, our attorney, our staff. Talk to any one of our staff, the MTA, MSU Extension, GFOA, there's a lot of really good organizations to go to. Thank you.
You also want to speak to the budget and finance committee?
Yes, we're having, thank you Will, having a meeting tomorrow at three thirty PM where we're going to be talking about our work for this next quarter. So some good work planning on a range of topics, invite everybody to join. Thank you.
Will there be an agenda published?
It is.
When was that published?
Uh, I emailed it to you this morning and it's on the website.
Great.
Is anybody else having trouble finding it?
I didn't see it in email.
Okay. Okay, great, thanks.
Pleasure to work.
The only thing I want to just offer to my, the last two days in the office, not any mail yet. We took in two million.
It's really hard to hear.
The last two days in the office, we took in two point four million dollars just at the time. Now, we haven't even done the mail yet because, you know, we just keep working at it. And I do have a person that is helping as Jessica. And I do have a person that is helping as Jessica reference, and that's Doug Armstrong, our assistant fire chief. And he's been fun to work with, very good, very quick at learning, and, um, I'm looking for maybe whatever he can give me to continue. That's basically at work. We'll get everything caught up, and then I give it all away. It's a little bit, we have a little bit on the summer bills, but most of it is for schools, county that I have to collect for. That's much of.
Trustee Corto, Planning Commission?
Thank you. So the Planning Commission has been working on revising the sign ordinance to make it content neutral in accordance with legal recent court cases. The Planning Commission has now considered it the revisions at two meetings. Um, and after additional minor revisions, will recommend the ordinance to the BOT for consideration. The Task Force on Sustainability that the Planning Commission has convened met for their first full working meeting on September second. They are now also convening working groups on different topics. There are five major topics. Natural ecosystems and sustainable food systems, energy and buildings, transportation and mobility, materials and waste, and climate resilience and energy, uh, or sorry, emergency preparedness. Those working groups will be convening during before the next monthly meeting and will be the ones really digging into the details of what policies are out there and what policies can be put together. So the the task force is off and running and engaged in developing an environmental sustainability and climate action plan for recommendation to the board late next year. And that is it for Planning Commission.
Would like to segue into the Land Preservation Committee?
Sure, the Land Preservation Commission Committee has not met since our last meeting, but will be meeting this Thursday for its regular meeting, Thursday at three o'clock. Um, and I I believe the materials have been submitted to be posted on the website.
Thank you. Um, Transportation Alternatives Planning Committee, Trustee Vogel.
That would be me. Um, I'm going to go off camera for a reliable audio, so one second. All right, so three things really quick, uh, regarding pathways, the Zebra pathway, as we can all see, is progressing nicely on schedule. Um, this is phase three. The Parkland six-foot sidewalk, um, is slightly delayed due to contractor, uh, issues, but that is on target for completion this fall. So both great news.
Lose the audio?
We can't hear you, Jane.
Jane?
Let me cut, Will?
Yeah.
Let me call in, and it'll be a better connection.
Great.
Do you hear that, Will?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So go on to some other reports, and I will call in for a better connection.
Oh, okay. Um, Trust trustee Jerome, Parks Advisory Board?
Yeah, uh, and one comment, uh, as a member of Budget and Finance, I know there's four commissioners on that. And, um, it's, I I it's some violation of the OMA to not provide materials and agendas for us. I really want us to be able to be fruitful when we're having that meeting. So just a a reminder that we really need to get those out in a timely fashion for both the trustees and the citizens that wish to participate in that. From the Parks and Recreation, uh, meeting, um, I'm going to speak to the, um, Scioto WHDC, uh, because it's um, moved out of the LPC and now is a is a property that's owned by the township. So just to, um, update everyone on the status of that. Um, uh, Will mentioned earlier that we pulled out, we weren't going to be pursuing a contract as of yet, and there's a reason for that. Uh, so essentially what the process has been to date is that Scioto Township, and this happened at our last meeting, we passed the resolution in favor of pursuit of historic designation, which is a key component for the WHDC to have in receipt of, for them to actually evaluate, and I presented at the last meeting of that, uh, presentation regarding the property, our resolution in support of seeking historic designation. And at that point in time, they go ahead and try to create, um, a resolution of their own.
They're recommending your your audio.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
So, um, we made a resolution, we we made, I made a proposal to them, including our resolution, and they, as a recommend body, recommending body now make a resolution to the Board of Commissioners, which will be on not December, Tembre fifteenth meeting, but the following, to have the Board of Commissioners approve their recommendation for the pursuit of um, the formation of a study committee and the process of the historic designation. I will, um, request if there's anybody that has any interest in serving on the study committee, which determines and evaluates the history and significance of the property, building, parcel, uh, and landowners, if anyone is interested, please contact me as soon as possible. Um, and so that process is well underway, and it will be going in front of the BOC, as I say, at their next meeting, at which point, once, uh, if they are in acceptance of the recommendation of the Historic District Commission, we will then be engaging in a contract. So I just wanted to clarify that for everyone. Um, I will just jump ahead to the broadband, Will, because I know then we'll go back and leave it to to Jane, if that's all right. Um, and I just wanted to mention to everybody, so on September first, we had talked about, I had encouraged everyone to join and participate on the, it was the Board of Commissioners, it was the Ways and Means Committee. At that meeting, the full funding of the broadband gap filling proposal was unanimously approved. Once again, they are a recommending body, and that is going to be going in front of the Board of Commissioners, uh, actually, September fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, so tomorrow, with regards, and it's, there's a final vote that expected to fully fund the fourteen million sixteen six seventy-two, two seventy, uh, the broadband gap filling proposal. And in addition to that, they've also at the, uh, BOC, um, Ways and Means, they added, uh, eight hundred thousand dollars for affordability, literacy, and access initiative. Uh, and so, uh, you're welcome to participate again tomorrow evening. I encourage your support, and it looks like, uh, we will be very successful, and that Washtenaw County has been very responsive to the broadband needs of, uh, all those in Si- in Scioto, as well as, uh, across Washtenaw. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, is Jane back with? Yeah, connected?
Let me see. I don't see a phone number or her name. Oh, here's a phone number. Uh, let's see. Jane, is that you? Hi, Jane, is that you? Ending in five eight?
Okay.
Hi, Jane.
Okay, so a quick update on TAP. Right now, I gotta get rid of this. All right, is that? Okay, I think we're good now? Yes?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Um, okay, so don't know how far that got. Zebra is progressing very nicely on phase three. That construction is uh, on track to finish within a few weeks. Parkland is the Parkland sidewalk from Jackson all the way back, uh, to Eagle Point is delayed a few weeks, but on schedule to finish this fall, which is our promise to our partners. So that is great news. But a significant amount of work underway in TAP and with the supervisor, who's really looking ahead to phase four and five of Zebra, which is getting to Peters Road, and then across the bridge, the railroad tracks and connecting to border to border are very expensive segments. So we're working with, um, Representative Lovinski, who is quite an advocate of the pathways, to see if she can se- secure some funding in, um, what she refers to as the Biden dollars, uh, in the state, so very much a priority on her list, which is just great. Um, we are also working with the Michigan Natural Re- uh, Natural Resources Trust Fund, um, and they, uh, for additional support for the Zebra pathway, as well as the Connected Communities, which is the local, uh, Washtenaw County, um, relevant, uh, funding source. So all of those discussions are progressing. I am confident that TAP has a lot of irons in the fire for various funding options. The other big one is the board-approved OHM doing the work for a federal TAP grant, Transportation Alternative Planning, that's kind of a proper noun in the federal world. And that will be a grant to get us the bridge over here on, uh, over here on River Drive. So all of that work is underway, very exciting. Um, really hats off to to just a great TAP group right now. Um, much of this work is being done within TAP, um, and and this new project manager is going to be just great to have on board. A a very important focus emerging within the TAP Committee right now is beginning to set up what will be our public input process. And and the group is just thinking so creatively about this because as we wrap up, a- a- as we can see our way through the Zebra segments and Parkland Plaza, those those have been the known declared priorities. Now we need to really engage our residents. Um, we have a concept map, we have various ideas, and and so really coming months will be a lot of work on that public engagement process. Um, and given the length, well, I'll just share one other thing that's really interesting, and and it really speaks to the creativity of of the individuals in TAP. So there's something called STRADA, which some of you may know about. It is a widely used cycling program where you can upload data on where you rode, the miles you did, et cetera. And it can be used to get a sense of where the primary biking paths, biking routes in an area. So so although not definitive, it's going to be a really interesting source of data for us as we begin to now assert the next round of priorities for TAP. Okay, that's it.
Thank you. Um, and now, um, turning back to my report, um, briefly want to update both, um, the issue of waste calling. I know I spoke about this at our last meeting, but this is something that is a big focus. Um, and there are a lot of people who are contacting the township with, uh, concerns or complaints about service from GFL. So since our last meeting, I sent a letter to GFL alerting them that the township was preparing to implement the contractual sanctions, uh, for GFL service failures. Um, but I also said that before taking that step, I wanted to invite GFL to, um, redouble its efforts to address these shortcomings. And I met with GFL managers last week. I learned of several steps that they are taking, including the creation of a dedicated Scioto Township customer service position, so that, um, I hope and they hope they will be able to be more responsive to complaints from Scioto Township residents. Um, the township has also taken the step of instituting a new online form for residents to use in reporting service issues with GFL. And the form is on the township's website. By completing the form, residents can help the township and GFL to work together more effectively to address complaints, and at the same time, um, help the township to, um, gather, um, data on on how service is being delivered or not, um, over time. Um, this is, I'm obviously going to be an ongoing challenge for Scioto Township and for, um, GFL, and I hope that um, residents will help us, um, in in improving that service. Um, brief report on the DDA, the DDA Board met yesterday and approved the additional Brownfield Grant funding from the state to expand the environmental cleanup of an industrial site on Jackson Plaza. Um, there are two items later on the agenda related to that project. Um, the DDA Board also authorized funding for the rehabilitation of two drainage culverts located on Parkland Plaza and Little Lake Drive. Uh, this will extend the life of those two significant elements of township infrastructure within the DDA District. That's also later on the agenda. And I'll take the opportunity to, um, respond to, um, the clerk's report in terms of the audit. Um, this is something that has been, uh, something that we've met about. Um, I talked with, uh, in addition to the report from the auditors that was described by the clerk. I've talked, um, with the auditor, um, about the question of seeking an extension. I also talked with the township attorney. Um, it is, um, in my view, um, not a a big decision, uh, something the township did just last year, uh, is to seek a thirty-day extension. Um, we do have extenuating, um, circumstances in that the finance director um, is, um, on a medical leave. And, um, she is the person who has been overseeing the audit all along. So, um, with a thirty-day extension, um, the hope is and the expectation is that she will be able to conclude the audit, uh, for the township without having to seek outside, uh, intervention. However, um, the thirty-day extension does also allow us the flexibility to seek, um, outside assistance if we choose, uh, but to do so in a fashion that's not, uh, rushed um, or placing ourselves under, um, unnecessary, uh, pressure. So I have, in fact, submitted a request for a thirty-day extension from the state um, and hope to hear about that, uh, uh, response soon. Um, with that, um, we can move on to the, uh, next item on the agenda, um, which I believe is our public hearings. Public hearings, we have four of them. Um, I have a statement um, that I would like to read, um, about the public hearings. All four of these public hearings are for neighborhood road improvement SADs. So this statement sort of applies to all of them. Um, these public hearings are being held this evening to receive comments and objections from the public to the establishment of special assessment districts for proposed road improvements being, uh, two, uh, particular roads, which we will list as we go, all being public roads within Scioto Township, with the exception of one, and that's Merlin Way, which is a private road. We have received petitions to establish the special assessment districts for this purpose, signed by a majority of the property owners abutting these roads. We encourage everyone participating in these public hearings to state their position for or against. If you object to the establishment of this district, you must state so this evening, giving your name and address, or provide the same information to the township clerk in writing uh, by the end of this public hearing. You do not have to state the reason that you object, just that you do object. Failing to do this, you forego your opportunity to object to the establishment of the special assessment district. It should be noted that this is the first step in this special assessment process. And should the district be established, there will be an additional public hearing and more opportunities for public comment. Um, before I declare the public hearings open, um, I would like to invite, um, before I declare the first public hearing open, I would like to invite uh, Joe Maynard, um, to, uh, join us, um, and make a brief presentation. Uh, this is for the Daleview Drive Special Assessment District, and once Joe has presented, um, then we'll we'll officially open that public hearing.
Okay, good evening. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yep.
All right, good. Um, thank you, Will, for that introduction. Um, I am Joe Maynard with Washtenaw Engineering. Um, we were, um, uh, retained by the township to assist in the special assessment. Um, as part of that As part of that work plan, we did complete a topographical survey of the project site, including the starting to the ending point of the project. Washtenaw Engineering worked with MTC, a geotechnical company, to perform road borings to get an analysis of the existing composition of the base of the roadways. With that, they came back with the approximate existing base material of about four inches. And their report recommended an additional four inches of stone base be added to that prior to paving for structural stability. The existing roadway as part of our survey showed to be roughly, on the average, of 20 feet wide. Some areas, obviously, are slightly less, some are slightly more. But on the average, the roadway was about 20 feet wide. With majority of the area, you get this, I like to call it a country curb, where a lot of your gravel material kind of falls to the edge over time. And that creates a curbing effect, which allows the water to run down the edges of the roadway and creating those gullies and valleys. So that's part of our rehabilitation process here, is to get rid of that curb and allow the water to drain into the natural ditches that exist on site. So the project was designed to meet Washtenaw County Road Commission standards. Two 11-foot lanes with two gravel shoulders on either side, creating 22 feet of pavement and two feet of gravel on either side. This additional widening through the area will basically lead into some lawns looking like they're smaller. But in most cases, you're basically losing that country curb that you have there. The project will also seek to do drainage improvements. Some driveways will have culverts replaced. Some driveways will have ditch lines cleaned out. Some areas will probably have tree removals. I'll get into that here in a minute. We did do an evaluation of the existing creek culvert that goes underneath the roadway. Found that to be in good shape. Definitely able to withstand the next 20 years' life expectancy of the roadway. And then I came up with a list here of just items, that questions we had from some residents and other things that I think that residents are probably wondering or wondering about. So along this roadway, we have six trees proposed to be removed. Other trees may be trimmed up to the county minimum 14-foot height. We're happy to work with the homeowners and let them know ahead of time before any other trees that are not noted on the plans to be trimmed, so that they're notified. All driveways within the area will have removals. If your asphalt, it'll be cut back roughly five feet back. New gravel placed and repaved with the roadway. This is mostly because the roadway is being raised in most areas by about seven inches. We need to blend that together so that there's not a bump at the end of your driveway. As I noted, ditches and culverts are going to be claimed to be replaced as needed. There also is no impact to personal property outside of the right-of-way on any properties without seeking easements or impacting wells or other items that are within your lawn space and out of the road right-of-way. Mailboxes in most cases will need to be removed and relocated. The contractor will work with the homeowner. In most cases, new posts will be provided, but the same mailbox will be reset. If the posts are in good shape when they're pulled, they'll be reset with the same posts. If there are landscaping items within the roadway, they are not covered by the contract. If they're removed, homeowner will be notified and will make necessary arrangements with the homeowners on a by-case basis. And we do want the homeowners, if they have sprinkler systems or in some cases, maybe visible dog fences, other items like that that are in the right-of-way, near the roadway, you need to work with us to get those flagged ahead of time so that we can work with you to either relocate those sprinkler heads or have discussions about options in regards to that. And we will be notifying homeowners prior to the start of construction. With that, that's all I have at this time, unless, Will, you think there's anything else that I missed.
Well, we may come back to you with questions. But why don't we call the public hearing open at nine? What is it? I can't even say it.
Nine fifty-four.
Fifty-four, okay. It's a kind of some glare from here. And the individual tapes of video.
Eight fifty-four.
Eight fifty-four, okay. That day I got worried.
Oh, eight fifty-four, yeah, I'm sorry. So the public hearing is now open. Everyone who would like to speak to the question of the Daleview Drive Special Assessment District is welcome to speak. We'll start with those who are present in person. You have an individual time limit of three minutes. And trustee Jerome, will you keep track of time again? And let people know when they have 30 seconds remaining? Is there someone present who would like to speak to the Daleview? Please come up to the table. And for the public hearings, we do ask that people state their name and address.
My name is Richard Lawton, L A W T O N. I live at 2888 Daleview Drive, Ann Arbor. I've been there for, since 1971. I live just to the west side of the creek that runs through the culvert that runs underneath Daleview at its lowest point. And then runs down to the river. I'm very concerned about the destruction of the roadway. I looked at the plans, and there is no forbidden for runoff at a particular area there at the culvert. And it's very steep, quite this, quite a difficult engineering job to handle that drop-off as the water comes down the road or even in the culverts along the side. My family always called it land. And it's filled with trees and woods, and there's many nice trees all surrounded. I am, however, also very much in favor of the roadway being put in. I think it's really necessary. I sincerely believe that the block and all road people, they do their best, but the road has deteriorated year after year. And it is in very serious right at the point of where the culvert runs through. A muddy pool of water right now. We've been barely past it. I have to drive out going west rather than going east because the road is, it's been eroded. There's a huge crack, a cleft, where the water runs off and down into the culvert area. And it doesn't do the many
Thirty seconds.
To grade the road. It's completely shot. Few days, it was arranged for that. I am concerned about
Thank you.
Are there any others present here in the meeting hall who would like to speak to the Daleview Public Hearing? Are there any people participating remotely who would like to participate in the public hearing on the Daleview Drive S A D?
Please raise your Zoom hand. Daleview Drive S A D Public Hearing. First up is Michelle Cody, followed by Elizabeth Hetrick. Michelle? Sorry, the names are jumping around here. Michelle? Going to move on to Elizabeth Hetrick, and I'll come back to Michelle. Elizabeth?
Hi, yes, good evening, trustees and neighbors. My name is Elizabeth Hetrick. I live with my husband Joel and our two children at 2650 Daleview Drive. And I'm calling in tonight to reiterate our written objection to having our property. Like I said, 2650 Daleview Drive included in the Daleview Drive Street Paving Special Assessment District. The reason for that is that Daleview Drive is already paved up to and 72 feet past our driveway. So including us in the special assessment district would seem to amount to sort of a double jeopardy as our property would have been included in the original paving special assessment district back in the 1970s. In addition, at the February SiO Township hearing, township personnel indicated that the special assessment district would only include those parcels where the property owner has a benefit from the improvement, but we will not benefit from the paving project. We already have paved access, and we won't use the newly paved portion. In addition, since a portion of our property does have frontage along the proposed paving section, we will incur a negative impact, a loss of property due to the widening of the road. So while we support our neighbors in their desire to have paved access to their homes, we object to the inclusion of our property in the special assessment district. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Next up is Michelle Cody, followed by Rob Pattinson. Michelle?
Hi, can you hear me now? Okay, okay, Michelle Cody, 4620 Stein Road. I'm sort of neighbors to the Daleview residential area, and I sympathize with their water issues. And I wish that that could be remediated without major road disturbances. I do support the leaving of the decision to pave or maintain a road status quo to those residents who are affected. However, I would like to speak to, as a 33-year SiO Township resident, I bought acreage and built my home with a deep love, respect, and appreciation of nature and tranquil surroundings. I purposely sought sanctuary from Ann Arbor and its amoeba-like spread. And as a 1975 U of M grad, I returned seeking a natural place to raise my children and let them play outside and climb trees, ride bikes farther afield. And I have walked, or watched with dismay, the Uber development of Ann Arbor and the aptly named Skyline High School is significant. And I see the Jackson Road corridor has morphed into a very busy highway and adjacent lands parallel to Jackson Road. As you all know, many subdivisions have been built. So with regard to my initial appreciation of nature, I speak on behalf of land preservation and some life in the slow lane. Quality of life is changed immeasurably with road paving. I do sympathize with the residents of Daleview in the regard of the water drainage issues. And I too, on Stein Road, do live on a dirt road, and I treasure it. And I just treasure the beauty of thy surroundings. And vehicle speed, increased traffic, and more development ensues once a road is paved. Now, that area does have a dead-end cul-de-sac, and I understand that that might not be the case there. So I would speak though, and please keep existing unpaved roads unpaved. Washtenaw County Road Commission does an excellent job on Stein Road of maintaining the unpaved roads I travel on, Stein and Joy and Maple and so forth. And it is my sincere desire to urge for rural preservation so that the tightly packed Ann Arbor area residents have some lovely, quiet, calm, natural areas to bike, walk, and enjoy a slow drive in the remaining rural paradise. It does relieve stress, and we have tons of bicyclists and walkers and joggers here. So I'm speaking on behalf of appreciating our fragile natural environment, which is so lovely to look at. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Next up is Rob Pattinson. Rob?
Thank you. Rob Pattinson, 500 North Seab. I'm hoping tonight that we hear an explanation for, there's four different S A Ds tonight, and they vary from $6,000 to $22,000 per property. And that is a vastly different tax assessment for those properties. I'm hoping we'll hear a comparison and analysis of why there is that wide difference between each S A D. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. I see no other Zoom hands. Oh, there's one. That's all I had to say. Janet Meda, followed by Paul Rasmussen. Janet?
Hello. First of all, I'd like to thank Joe for coming out and walking the property so we understood the project scope. And Michelle, thank you for your comments. They're very much needed in this effort. First of all, it's a question, and it really goes back to Joe.
Would you please give your address?
I'm sorry, 3132 Daleview.
Thank you.
How and when did 3151 Daleview get added as a 21st property to the scope of the Daleview SAD, which is described as 20 properties? 3151 will benefit from the SAD paving effort by having their 50-year-old pavement removed and replaced as new. All property owners involved with this paving effort should share equally in the cost. The current SAD of 20 properties needs to be changed to match the scope of the project. This effort to slip another property in at the cost to neighbors is disheartening and unconscionable. Mr. Hathaway, you need to treat each of us equally without judgment. And regarding the meeting packet, the letter on page 187 regarding Daleview Drive from Hathaway to Mark McCulloch, the contents reference Merlin Way, not Daleview. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Janet. Next up is Paul Rasmussen, followed by Carolyn Kanaki. Paul Rasmussen?
Thank you. I would like to address the members of the board. I've lived on Daleview since 1973. In my, in two different addresses, my current house is 2853. And I, like Mr. Lawton, am very close to the creek and the drainage problems. The road has been getting worse and worse, and this rain today, you can take a look. The people who don't live on this road don't have to drive on it. But the mud and the potholes and the drainage crack that is developing are dangerous. Bicyclists can't use this road. The kids at the end of the street can't bicycle on it. And it needs to be remediated. The majority was very solid for this project. So I address the board and say, we've met all the requirements of the state to carry this project forward in terms of the majority. And we expect you to approve it accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Next up is Carolyn Kanaki. Carolyn? 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 Carolyn, I see you muting and unmuting yourself. Looks like you're having some trouble getting through. There is also a phone number at the top of the agenda that you may call. It is 1-312-626-6799, and enter meeting ID 85193538405.
Can you hear me from this location?
Can you hear me from this location?
Here you are, yes.
Oh, I've tried a different, I've tried a different computer. This is James Kanaki. I'm not Carolyn, obviously, but my wife Carolyn is here with me. We've been at 2826 Daleview for 44 years. That's right in the middle of the proposed Special Assessment District. So we are well familiar with the deterioration of the road and the inability of the road commission or road workers despite their best efforts to make any sort of lasting improvement. We have dealt with a protracted process to get to this point. Lots of twists and turns, not to mention potholes. And we now may be approaching a conclusion. What, at that point, I would like to ask respectfully each of the trustees to keep in mind one fundamental fact, and that is that from the outset, the majority of property owners within this proposed district have approved of it. And that seems to be the fundamental criterion for proceeding with the project. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, James and Carolyn. Any other people interested? Please raise your Zoom hand. I see none. Well?
In that case, maybe declare the public hearing closed at now is 9:10?
We should take a quick motion to close.
Oh, a motion, need a motion, I'm sorry. Motion to close the public hearing. Is there, is there a motion to do so?
Moved.
Moved by Jerome?
Support?
Support by Flintoff. Please call a roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes. Corto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
I mean, are you in a boat?
I think her audio isn't working. Yeah, she's saying yes.
We'll, we'll take that as a yes.
Sorry. There you are. Thank you.
I forget to start, it's not just unmute. I said yes.
Now we declare the, the public hearing closed at 9:12. And we can now move to the second public hearing. This is the Merlin Way Special Assessment District. And before I call the public hearing open, I would also like to give Joe Maynard a chance to give a brief presentation for the Merlin Way project.
Will, I had a quick question. What is the format gonna be for board questions? Is it later or now or what?
I was thinking that we, we could do that when we get to the action items. Is that okay?
It's fine.
I mean, we're not asking questions of the people participating in the public hearing, so. Okay. So with, with that, Joe, would you like to give your presentation on the Merlin Way SAD?
Sure. Thank you, Will. Again, this is kind of the same process that we went through for Daleview. Washtenaw Engineering did a topographic survey of the site. We contacted MTC to do the soils analysis along the roadway to give us an understanding of the road base, which is basically very consistent with Daleview Drive. And then about four inches of underlying gravel materials available. And they recommended an additional four inches on top of the roadway gravel prior to paving. Actually, in this situation, the roadway is actually a little skinnier. It actually gets down to mostly 18 foot wide. And then even more so at the cul-de-sac at the end, the bulb. That was going to need to be widened a little bit more. And there we're taking basically some of the island out in order to get, I'm sure a lot of the residents know is that the cul-de-sac bulb there, trucks have a hard time going around that. So one mitigation effort we're doing is to make that truck friendly so that they're not rutting up the lawns there in that space. So again, we are going back to 22-foot wide pavement through 11-foot lanes with two-foot gravel shoulders. Where one thing that we looked at was the entrance off of Marshall Drive. Marshall Drive currently gravel road does not have an established ditch line that we could actually connect to and install a culvert underneath that roadway. There's very steep banks on both sides of Merlin Way on Marshall Drive. It makes it very costly to install a culvert there. So we came up with a solution to actually essentially a super elevation of the roadway where we basically pitch all the road drainage from one side to the other, allowing water to sheet flow across. And we will create a bit of a spill. It was also recommended that maybe we should look at the road commission and stone that in order to keep that from eroding, which we will definitely do with the contractor. So that the water will be channeled across safely without eroding the roadway or Marshall Drive either any further. So again, drainage culverts replacements along the way. There's two crossroad culverts currently in Merlin Way. The first one, which is about halfway up the roadway, is in need of replacement and that will be done as part of the project. There's another one further up, closer to the cul-de-sac. That was found to be in good shape and that will remain. With that one remaining, there are a few trees that need to be removed. Mostly for that end of the culvert, cul-de-sac, tree trees, some shrubs, in order to properly drain the cul-de-sac bulb back to that crossroad culvert. Minimum trees, branches to be removed along the roadway. Again, driveways will be cut back and repaved to blend in with the proposed roadway. Ditches cleaned, culverts replaced if needed. No work outside of the roadway, riding way on personal property. But again, mailboxes will be removed and reset as needed. And we ask that all homeowners identify sprinklers if they exist in the roadway and notify us, notify us of any other items that are on the roadway. And we'll work with them if there's any landscaping items that do need to be removed as part of the work project. And that pretty much, I think, takes through my list here, so.
Thank you, Joe. I declare the public hearing for Merlin Way SAD open at 9:16. Is there anyone present who would like to speak to the Merlin Way SAD project in this public hearing? Please come, come up to the table.
Hello?
Hello?
My name is Enes Burk, 1008, from May. And I've been through this process going along and I've been a little frustrated by some of the things I ran into. I was told in order to bid on this project, somebody had to be approved by the road commission. And I went to the road commission and I was with the township hall and called it not the case. So then I said, well, I'd like to get a copy of the engineering report. And I started a phone call, which I never got response to. I made a couple of trips down here to try to get a copy, which I didn't. And finally, on August 30th, I did get a copy, which I forwarded to one of the, another person who wanted to bid on the project. And he was not contacted by the road commission. When I talked to the road commission, they told me, they, the Washtenaw Engineering, they told me, no, no, you have to be approved. I said, well, I don't think so. Cause I've talked to everybody. He says, oh, I guess I was looking at one of the old forms. So that's true. You don't have to be. So I have two additional bids here that I wanted to approve in the process and I've got copies here.
Thank you, Doug.
Very much, thank you.
Are there additional speakers who would like to address this public hearing present in the room? Are there people participating remotely who would like to speak during this public hearing?
If so, please raise your Zoom hand. Merlin Way Public Hearing. First up is Mark Rushbrook, excuse me, first up is Mark Rushbrook followed by David Reed. Mark?
Hi, this is Mark Rushbrook, live at 877 Merlin Way. And just want to say that we are still in full support of this project moving forward. And having reviewed the materials, we concur in support as the recommendation to proceed with a contractor that's noted there.
Thank you, Mark. Next up is David Reed. David?
David Reed, 713 Merlin Way. Couple of things, I just want to remind the board that it is not necessary for residents to speak in favor of an SAD. Their, their, their support of the SAD is signified by the signing of the petition. The only, the only people who need to speak at this public hearing are those who are in opposition. And that is number one, to let the board know that. And number two, so that they have a basis for an appeal at the tax tribunal. So that's just a point of order. Second thing, answer to Rob Pattinson. Rob, the difference is scope of work and length of road. And third, in answer to Enes's request, I had sent the engineering reports that supplied to me by Joe Maynard to the favor in question and I had asked him to send his bid directly to Joe and a copy to me. So why it went to Enes, I have no idea. So Joe now has no idea what, or I assume Joe has no idea what, what you were just handed. And I think, I just hope this doesn't mess things up. I think I am in favor. We here at 713 are in favor of this project moving forward. Thank you.
All the speakers.
Jean Herg. Jean?
Hi, this is Jean Hergat, 685 Merlin Way, Dexter, Michigan. And I too just want to reiterate that I'm in favor. This process has been, as the Daleview residents said, protracted. I think our SAD should have been approved last February. And it's frustrating that the board did not know the rules and how this process worked. We already had enough residents to approve this. And yet we were put on the back burner when there was confusion at the February meeting. And two other SAD were in question and had opposition. We had no opposition or only one was opposed at the time. And to my understanding, there is only one resident still opposed. So we have nine property owners out of 10 that want to move forward. And now is this going to slow the process down with getting another bid? Now, if it is, I want you guys to start pushing it forward. We should have had this paved this summer or even last spring. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Any other interested public? I see no more. Will?
In that case, a motion to close the public hearing?
Moved.
Moved by Palmer, support by Jerome. Please call a roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer? Flintoff, yes. Corto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
The hearing is closed at 9:23 PM. Will?
The next public hearing is on the Wagner Ridge Court Special Assessment District. This one and the last public hearing, these two projects did, were not engineered by the township, so Joe does not have a presentation on these. You know, if we have questions that arise, I, I, perhaps the organizers of these two can address them. These are neighborhood, all of these are neighborhood led. In these, in these two cases, Wagner Ridge and Westview Way, Southwood Court, there was no engineering phase by the township. Declare the public hearing open for Wagner Ridge Court at 9:25. Is there anyone who would like to speak to that, that project? Please come off to the table.
Good evening, I'm Dan McKenzie, 736 Wagner Ridge Court. And I am here to represent all 50 residents who are impacted by this settlement. I'm happy to say from the outset, we had 100% approval of the project.
And Dan, I just have to interrupt you because you have such a great presence. I want you to know that the camera is right over here.
That's why I'm facing this grid with my best view.
All right.
So, from the back again?
Yeah, yeah. And come, come, come to, come to the center here. There you go. All right. Take two.
Take two. I'm also joined by two fellow residents who were instrumental in this meeting, Norm Herbert and Tim Andrews. So the project for us, the last couple, I built my home in 1991. Loved the area and the last couple of years I was really struggling with the condition of the creek. When I got the spring newsletter from the township, it was a great blueprint of what can we do? So I and Norm and Tim got together and decided we wanted to initiate the SAD. One of the first things I did was meet with Mark McCullough from Washtenaw County Road Commission. He came to the street, he looked at the property, the road. And we determined that I'm, no engineering was really necessary. Really what we're going to do is the big mill off and repave the roads. Having said that, we've had several iterations of our bid. The guiding principle for me initially was sharpen the rope, measure twice, cut once. If in doubt, measure three times and four times if I have to. If you have any doubts, I'll be doing that. Talk the minded way. We've had multiple bids. So that was important as far as getting the right program lined up. And we also complete transparency. So I know that the meeting is for objection. I felt it was important to be here to say that we are 100% on board. I've sent two emails addressing the board, whether you notice. And we'd like to get this project done this year. I spent many, many, many hours on this project as, as Tim and Norm and my neighbors who had neighborly meetings. And what it's going to be there for us, so my goal, my hope is that I know we have to have October 12th as a meeting. I'd like to get the contractor off and running. So that's all I have to say. Thank you very much. Looking for an approval.
Thank you, Dan.
Well, there's no other speakers who are present for this hearing. Are there any people participating remotely who would like to speak during this public hearing on Wagner Ridge Court's SAD?
If so, please raise your Zoom hand. I see none.
Okay. Well, it isn't surprising, it's 100% support, so there's no really any opposition.
I'd like to add one more thing. Thank you, Will. It was very helpful. The first communication I had with Noel was 9 o'clock. He had not responded with an email. I received emails from Will at 8 o'clock in the morning. So it was very helpful and I was reaching out for information. So thank you for that. In fact, he put me in touch with a person who was kind of a, a member, showing me the path initially. So thank you for your help.
Well, with that, is there a motion to close the public hearing? Moved by Palmer, support by Vogel. Please call a roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes. Corto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Public hearing is closed at 9:23. Public hearing is closed at 9:28 PM.
Okay, our final public hearing is the Westview Way, Southwood Court Special Assessment District. And again, this was not engineered by the township, so we won't have a presentation by Joe Maynard. I declare the public hearing open at 9:30. Is there anyone present who would like to speak to, please come up?
Here again.
Hi, Ted.
My name's Ted Thacker. I lived at 1039 Westview Way with my lovely wife and mother for 25 years, and we're planning for about 25 more. We have initially on the petition, 15 of 17 homeowners signed it. The two homes that did not have an absentee landlord have been raised, and the other one was in the process of a bail, so there was no technically an order. I believe there were a couple of protests filed earlier. I'm not sure what tonight brings, but I do know that your mailboxes continue to fill up with letters from the residents in this special assessment district, asking for your support to continue with the project forward. And I'm asking the same this evening, and we'll look forward to the board giving the same kickoffs to get our 37-year-old road replaced with some asphalt.
Okay. Thank you, Ted.
Are there any remote participants who want to speak?
If so, please raise your Zoom hand. I see none. Oh, excuse me. Pardon me. Matt Ransom. Matt?
Yes, hello. Matt Ransom, 1193 Southwood Court. First of all, I just want to thank Supervisor Hathaway and the board. You guys are doing a great job. I know it's a lot of work, a lot of hours. We appreciate your service. I also want to reiterate what Ted Thacker just mentioned, is that if not 100% consensus, the majority is definitely here in the neighborhood who, you know, want the road to be repaved. Since I moved here three years ago, I met with Bryce Kelly, and he was the first to mention that the master plan was to bring water and sewer up Liberty potentially, and I guess that's my biggest concern, is not finding the answers as to what the timeline of that would be, and if we would be forced to tie in and possibly have to dig up the road that we are going to be putting in. So it's been a concern of mine for some time, and I guess I just haven't found the answers to those questions. Other than that, you know, we're looking forward to having a new surface, and again, that's my biggest concern, is the timeline of that, and if we would be forced to tie in or not. So I guess I'll sign off. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Matt. Anyone else? I see none. Will?
In that case, no further speakers. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Moved.
Moved by Jerome?
A support.
Support by Palmer? Please call the roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer? Flintoff? Yes. Corto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel? Vogel?
She's trying, yes. Yeah.
She's saying yes.
So it's 9:30?
I'm going to take that as a yes. Yes, 9:33.
That was a yes.
Yeah, okay. That brings us to the consent agenda. The consent agenda, just to review, now begins with I-3, and ends with I-6. The other items have all been moved off of the consent agenda, and in one case, off the agenda entirely. Would anyone like to move the consent agenda?
I'll move it.
Moved by Noel, support by Vogel. Please call the roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer? Flintoff? Yes. Corto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yep.
Consent agenda is adopted.
Okay. That brings us to unfinished business. The first item is the possible action on the Daleview Drive Special Assessment District. And before we get into the discussion, the questions, discussion with the Board of Trustees, I wanted to invite our assessor to respond to any of the issues that were raised during the public hearing, to which she can respond. This is our new head assessor, Marsha Clopka.
Most of them were just, everybody would guess, and after the difference in cost, that the road will be once needed. That would be okay, we got more than I can. Can I ask her any other questions?
Marsha, the one question was about the inclusion or exclusion. There was a statement that 3151 got added. I just wanted to clarify, it wasn't added to the SAD, but the speaker was implying that it was included in your engineering plans. Is that right, Joe?
Unmute there. Yeah, we actually, due to the roadway grades out there, and the raising of the roadway by seven inches, actually had to pull back further in order to blend that roadway in properly. That's the only reason that the, that end of the project for Daleview got extended was for the proper grading and engineering design. It wasn't to try to sneak somebody in, it's just to make sure the roadway has a smooth, efficient grading plan and design.
Thank you.
And I think there was another question about loss of property, and Joe, I think you did address this during your presentation, but if you could just clarify, you know, sort of reiterate that, what you said about right of way?
Yeah, so as we know, the road right of way is 66 foot wide. That's the area needed for the roadway and drainage improvements in order to convey water. What happens over time with gravel roads is, you know, that road material gets kind of slushed over to the side, and then it builds up a little bit of a curve, and then the grass grows in it, and then it kind of gets mowed as your lawn. This just happens slowly over time. So what we're doing is, we're actually taking that space back, but it's going to account for about two feet along each property owner, and maybe a little more, like three feet in some spots, a little less in others. But what we try to do is smooth that roadway out and widen it back up to the original design width.
Okay, and I'm trying to think if there were any other questions that were raised. There was a question?
I had questions.
Okay, go ahead, Trustee Noel.
Okay. Joe, I had sent you an email with a couple of questions, and you said you were going to respond to it, but I never got a response. So I'm a little bit, maybe you've responded now, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, one of the questions, I believe, was the inclusion of 31, I just lost that address again.
3151.
3151, yeah. That was one of the questions that was brought up, and that was more or less for the extension of the roadway, to get that extended.
And I think I asked you, could you show us a map? And you said you would.
Well, the map drawings are the engineering plans that the township has. I don't know if I have a copy that I could share tonight of those plans.
Were they in the packet?
Yeah, they should be in the packet, yes.
There's an SAD map in the meeting packet for this agenda item. If you look on page 77
Yep.
of the meeting packet.
Yep, I just couldn't tell the addresses on the.
So, yes, 3151 is the first parcel, sort of, that's not included, not highlighted in yellow, at the west end of Daleview. And it's a little confusing because on the map, it implies that the pavement ends a little further north on Daleview than it does. It actually, it sort of comes across and almost covers at a diagonal all of the frontage of that parcel.
Okay.
And I think, Joe, if I remember what you explained, is that there's a necessity to kind of blend the unpaved, the dirt portion in the paving of it, there's a necessity to blend it into the existing paved road, and that's what's necessitating the work on that sort of end of the paved road. Is that, is that correct?
That is correct. We also considered one other option, and that was to essentially dig out the roadway down what's going to be eight and three, 11 inches down. But then you also get into a cost of undercutting and additional testing, and so the cost-effective solution was to basically lift the roadway, extend it back, and just pave over a portion of the existing paved roadway, to blend those two grates together. Also lend it to a smoother transition than more of an abrupt bump in the roadway.
Does that help, Trustee Noel? Does that answer your question?
Yep, it basically answers my question. The other question I had, Will, was for some of these, we have the petition showing all of the signatures, but I didn't see a petition for the Daleview SAD.
I think there's one that we included in the packet with the petition, and that's because it was sort of came in a single PDF from the organizer of Wagner Ridge Court. And the subsequent corrected version of that resolution that I sent out via email to the board includes the actual bid information, which was not a part of that. So that's actually a better sort of agenda packet for that particular item than the one that went out in the meeting packet. That's, I think, it's not the one that we're talking about right now. It's the Wagner Ridge Court one.
Okay. So I just wanted to get an idea of how many of the Daleview residents are in support and how many are not.
Ah, that's a good question for our assessor.
Okay.
Five are not.
I can't hear her.
I'm sorry, one more time, Marsha?
Yeah.
Let's give her a moment. She's looking at it.
14, 14 signed it, said yes, and five did not sign and are against.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there further questions or comments from members of the Board of Trustees? I think most of the comments. Oh, there was one comment that I did want to address. There's a letter that was drafted as part of the packet of materials that would be used. Should this go forward, a letter from me to the Washington County Road Commission, that's a draft that was prepared, and obviously was prepared a little hastily because it has text referring to two different SADs, and we will certainly correct that letter before it's actually sent to the Road Commission. But thank you to Janet Medoff for pointing out that there's an error in that letter. I think if that's all of the comments, because we had a public hearing on this, I don't believe we actually need to have further public comments. That seems kind of redundant. But I suppose if there's someone out there who wants to comment, who hasn't already commented.
I think so. I think that's safe. Anybody interested in commenting on the Daleview? Janet Medoff? Janet?
Thank you. Joe, my question to you is, why is the west part of Daleview being treated differently than the east part of Daleview where it meets the pavement? When you were out here on our property, you said 3151 Daleview should have been included in the SAD, and all of a sudden you come up with this great excuse for Mr. Hathaway and the property owners that are pushing it. If they're, 3151's getting new pavement, all of us should be treated the same, and the cost should be spread equally.
Thank you, Janet. Next up is Jillian Carey. Jillian?
Yes, thank you. This isn't specifically just about Daleview. This has to do with all SADs, and the railroad street, Daleview, Westview Way, and so on. I have foiled and read through years of emails, and this goes all the way back to when Bryce Kelly was the manager and Jack Knowles was the supervisor. And under their leadership, the 2006 resolution had fallen away. It was still in, well, we were supposed to be following it, but we didn't. And reading through all of these emails, and it's upsetting, and also it's an embarrassment to Scioto Township as these big-ticket items have been handled, mishandled. Daleview Drive was told, and this is by Bryce Kelly, it would, this is before the petition, that it would be $4,000 to $5,000. So how many residents signed that petition under a false pretense? It hasn't, many of these SADs have not been, the policies and procedures have not been followed. My biggest concern is that these are going to go through, the construction's going to happen, and there could be potential lawsuits because information was not given properly. There's I have been through an SAD for my neighborhood with the Drain Commission, and every step of the way, I was informed, my neighbors were informed, we had meetings, we had tribunals, I had three, or two to three petitions that I needed to hand in to make sure everybody was on the same page. And I look at all of these SADs for these big-ticket items, and I have anxiety over this. One thing is, is that the roads get paved, and then they're paid for. The township ends up, by law, having to maintain these. Every single taxpayer pays for the maintenance. Was this given to the residents? Do they know this? Do they also know that SADs must be paid off before they sell their house? There's all kinds of information that has been piecemealed. I'm hoping that this new road advisory committee straightens up the township so we can make sure every resident is taken care of properly, that they're fully informed every step of the way. Thank you.
Thank you, Jillian.
We usually don't go back and forth during public comment. Is there a?
She has a point. She has a point.
Oh, the law's changed. Oh, okay.
Law's changed for road SAD, didn't fix the house.
There's no other public.
Oh, there's no other public? Okay. In that case, is there a motion, would someone like to make the model motion for the Daleview Drive SAD? This would be to adopt. Okay, so moved by Jerome? Support by support by Palmer? Support by Palmer? Please call a roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Corto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Motion passes seven zero.
Brings us to the next action item, um, the possible action on the Merlin Way, um, Special Assessment District. Um, are there any question, comments from members of the Board of Trustees?
Will, I just want to, um, share out, we, we, we received this information from Ennis Berger. Um, I don't know how, how relevant it is. I can't, I don't have my phone with me, um, so I can't take a picture and send it out. Um, it's an email and it was a proposal from T. Burks Asphalt and Concrete Paving, sent to Mr. Mike Bur, Mike Bergen of Washtenaw Engineering. A quote for the paving of Merlin Way, "Our bid is in accordance with plans by Washtenaw Engineering dated, uh, June thirtieth." And one hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars is the bid total, including bond.
Oh, I don't know what the procedure is. I mean, there's a bid that's, um, arriving, um, outside of the bidding process. I know, um, Joe, you, for Merlin Way, um, you vetted the bids for that project. Do you, you know, have any sense of sort of what happened here? What went astray?
I don't know why, um, I didn't receive that, um, bid from Mike in our office, whatever received that bid. If it was dated in June, um, we should have had it. Um, it sounds like the price is the same price that we have from ASI, one hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. Um, so, you know, price wise, cost wise, it's not gonna revise much. Um, but we do need to get a copy of that and, um, possibly, uh, discuss, um, options at that, at that point, because I, I don't know. We didn't, I didn't receive the bid, um, when I did my review.
So, the, what we're, uh, considering the action that we're considering today, the resolution doesn't speak to which contractor would get the bid. That's the, actually what would be decided as part of our actions on October twelfth at that meeting. Is that correct?
That would be correct. Yes. So we do have time to vet it, get it permitted. The price, the homeowners have been quoted will not change because the price sounds like the same price.
Great.
Okay. So it seems like there is a way forward that, um, this, this late arriving bid, I mean, you know, late arriving to us, but not necessarily late arriving, um, could still be considered.
Correct.
Okay. In that case, are there any other, um, questions or comments about the Merlin Way SAD? Are there any public comments about Merlin Way SAD?
Please raise your zoom hand. Merlin Way SAD. Any final comments? I see none. Will?
Is someone prepared to make the model motion to adopt the Resolution Number Two for, um, the Merlin Way SAD?
So moved.
Okay. Moved by Jerome? Dana, are you, or trustee Vogel, are you indicating support? So support from, uh, Vogel, please call a roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Corto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Motion passes seven zero. Will?
That brings us to, um, the next item, which is the Wagner Ridge Court. Um, action item. Are there any comments or questions from members of the Board of Trustees? Are there members of the public, uh, participating remotely who would like to comment?
If so, please raise your zoom hand. I see none. Will?
Is someone prepared to make the model motion? Moved by Jerome? Support by Corto?
Second.
Sorry. What, what was the mover and who was the seconder?
Moved by Jerome and I think it was, uh, trustee Corto who moved first.
Moved by Jerome, seconded by Corto?
Um, so please call a roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Corto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Motion passes seven zero. Will?
And, um, maybe this is like after the fact, but I want to clarify that the motion, the resolution is the version that, version that was sent out with, by email, not the one that was in the meeting packet. The correct, the corrected version of the Wagner Ridge Court Resolution. Um, that brings us to Westview Way, Southwood Court, Special Assessment District. Are there any um, comments or, uh, questions from members of the Board of Trustees? Corto?
I did have a question for a clarification. I didn't understand what the resident meant about the absentee landlord not being contactable. So I wonder if the assessor could just remind us what the, what the status of the petitions on this one, how many in favor and how many against?
Westview?
And Westview, Southwood Court.
And, and if she could please speak up, it's very, very difficult to hear her.
Fifteen of seventeen.
Marsha, would you be so kind to stand as you speak? I think that might help a little.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, on this petition, um, I had two that did not sign. Initially, it was three, but then a new owner came in and they signed the petition. And the rest of them all signed it.
Fifteen.
Yeah.
And a follow up, uh, another question, Marsha, if I could, and maybe for Marsha or Donna, I'm not sure. We got a call today, um, and I, I don't know, Will, if you had a chance to talk to her, um, but a resident on here who expressed, she, she had initially signed, she was then verbally expressing that she, um, while she's supportive of doing the road, she simply will not have the money to pay. She said she cannot afford it. Um, things have changed in her life. So what happens for a resident, um, who cannot pay? Is there any accommodation? Or plans, we, we, any way we can accommodate those residents?
We'll have to look into it. It goes on the tax bill.
I have to go to the, I have to go to the, you know.
Okay.
And object to the assessment. But she had to know that it's not gonna benefit us.
Okay.
Um, that's the only other way to not pay, I guess. But otherwise it becomes a winner. But then it's to the challenge.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Unless there's something legally allowed, there's nothing we can do with the budget.
Right. So it would be potentially a board of review issue.
Yeah.
Ultimately. Okay.
The only other, um, thing I can think of. Basically, I don't know what her, she can apply for hardship.
Mm-hmm.
If there are circumstances.
Okay. Great.
That's what you meant by board review.
Yes, yes. Thank you, Marsha.
If there are no further questions or comments from members of the Board of Trustees, are there any comments from anyone participating remotely? Or Dan, did you want to speak?
Any zoom hands? I see none. Will?
In that case, is someone prepared to make the model motion for the Westview Way, Southwood Court, Special Assessment District?
So moved.
Moved by, moved by Jerome?
I'll support.
Support by Noel? Please call a roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Corto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Motion passes seven zero.
Okay. We just, item J five.